Happy birthday.
Oh, you too.
Thanks. Yeah, quite before you start. Something like that.
This is TV thirty. Please stand by.
Down. Wow.
So good.
Stand by. And then five, four, three, two, one, cue.
Good evening. I'm welcome to this, the March eleventh meeting at the Livermore City Council. I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Berianchoz.
President.
Councilmember Branning.
Here.
Councilmember Kik.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carling.
Here.
Mayor Marshon.
Here. Should join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of San. My nation, my ground, and my citizens.
Thank you. Uh, next we have the, uh, under proclamations and presentations, we have a presentation from, uh, the Commission for the Arts, the annual update, uh, by Chair Kathleen DeRonalis. Good evening. You're doing great things.
That Kathleen DeRonalis, I've been a member of the Livermore Commission for the Arts since two thousand nineteen, recently, uh, appointed chair by my, my fellow commissioners. And so very honored to be here today to walk you through some of the things that we have been doing lately. Is it? Better? Okay. You mean, don't, don't, uh, turn my head. Got it. All right. So some of the things that we've been working on. Teresa, is it gonna be? I can go ahead and speak to some of them while Teresa is bringing that up. So some of the things that we've done over the last year is we have awarded four mini grants and recommended four applicants for project and program grant funding. We have also, we've also judged, uh, both the two thousand and twenty-three Teen Art Expo, which was here at the library, and also the two, twenty-twenty-three Spring Art Show, um, where we awarded, uh, seven participants there. Um, that's hosted by the Livermore Art Association. And just to let everyone know, their two thousand twenty-four show is currently scheduled for April twentieth and the twenty-first. So we're looking forward to that. Um, some other things that we've done over the year is our high school senior art awards. So we have awarded six students, uh, six hundred dollar awards each, um, to both, actually all three, Livermore High School, Granada High School, and Del Valle High School this year. Um, so that's something that, uh, is very special to go and present those. And also, uh, I know several of those students, um, received their certificates directly, uh, from mayor here, uh, at one of the council meetings. So some of the things that we're looking, doing, looking forward facing is focusing on ushering in the new Livermore Cultural Arts Plan. Um, since you're, since we're not seeing the presentation, uh, we'll speak to a few of these items. So we're, uh, prioritizing, operationalizing, strengthening our strategic partnerships, reviewing several of our existing programs and policies, and also encouraging diverse talent for open commission slots. Um, so that's something that we're always, uh, interested in, in having, uh, community members be interested in joining our commission. Um, lastly, we just want to acknowledge, uh, that it definitely takes a team. So not only my fellow commissioners, we have several dedicated city staff members, Teresa, Brandon, Soshi, that help in supporting us, and then, um, engaged, uh, with our, our resident citizens, and then obviously the city council that supports us in our important work. Okay?
Okay. By the way, we had a copy of your presentation.
Perfect.
We, we did have the slides up here.
Perfect.
It's just that nobody else could see them. Uh, but, uh, we had the, the new sculpture up in Springtown by the, uh,
Yes, in the library.
Such a cool sculpture.
Yes.
It really is. It's remarkable.
Yeah.
And, uh, of course, then it has the, uh, the Stockman from Stockman Park, which was, uh, fifty-seven years in the making. So that's, uh, again, great work that you're doing. Uh, you've added literally scores of murals, uh, and pieces of public art, uh, over the last few years. So it's really, uh, heartening to see how the arts are so alive here in Livermore. And a lot of that is because of our very, very active Commission for the Arts. So thank you for all the great work that you're doing.
No, thank you again for your support. As we all know, it's been an interesting last few years, and yet we have managed to beautify the city in so many areas. So definitely proud of that.
Uh, comments or questions from the council? Okay. Well, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, uh, proclamation declaring March twenty twenty-four as American Red Cross Month. Uh, I'll be presenting this to, uh, Zell Helstrom and Tim Allen, volunteers from the American Red Cross, uh, Alameda County Disaster Program. Uh, so I have, uh, the proclamation proclaiming American Red Cross Month. Uh, whereas founded in May eighteen eighty-one by Clara Barton, uh, the American Red Cross is a volunteer organization chartered and authorized by Congress to provide compassionate assistance to those afflicted by personal, local, or national disasters. And whereas, by training individuals in life-saving skills such as CPR, first aid, fire prevention, and water safety, people from throughout the United States have depended upon American Red Cross with the information and skills they need to be safe at home, work, play, and school. And whereas with over sixteen hundred volunteers in Alameda County, uh, the American Red Cross in two thousand twenty-three assisted or responded to two hundred twenty-six disaster operations, received twenty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-seven blood donations from eleven hundred sixty-one blood drives, uh, held throughout Alameda County, provided seven hundred eighty-eight local individuals and families with fire prevention, training, and supplies, and assisted, assisted three hundred sixty-eight members of the armed forces. And whereas the American Red Cross also trained twelve thousand one hundred seventy-seven citizens in first aid, CPR, and AED, trained thirty-one hundred sixteen people in aquatics and water safety, and through home fires campaign installed eight hundred seven smoke alarms, making two hundred thirty-two homes safer. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Livermore proclaims March twenty twenty-four as American Red Cross Month and encourages Livermore residents to support the American Red Cross efforts. So thank you very much. And I will tell you, I have taken the, uh, CPR class, and a week after I took it, I used it. So, uh, saving lives.
Right.
We'll say a couple of words. Uh, so I'm Zell Helstrom, uh, volunteer with the Red Cross for a number of years, and this is Tim Allen. Go ahead and say hi.
Hi, everybody.
Um, yeah, just proud and honored to accept the proclamation for March as the Red Cross Month from the city of Livermore. Uh, just wanted to let everybody know, most of the Red Cross, over ninety percent, is run by volunteers. And the volunteers are there, you know, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, um, along with the general generous, helpful, financial, uh, blood donations, uh, community partners, and the people trained in, uh, health and safety skills. Um, yeah, we're, like I said, we're, we're up twenty-four, seven, uh, not individually, but as a, as a group. And we assist in disasters, large and small, from single-family and single-apartment fires to the huge wild, wildfires and floods. Um, yeah, we work alongside the cities, uh, counties, the government to, and community partners to buy, to provide sheltering, feeding, and recovery to those affected by these disasters. Uh, the Red Cross is a number of things, and I'm gonna have Tim tell about two more.
Yeah, and as I think everybody knows, across the nation, every day, the Red Cross is holding blood drives to support those that are in, in critical medical needs. Additionally, we, uh, and it's not as well-known, but the Red Cross supports our military members and their family members. If there are any emergencies domestically, the Red Cross will across the world get, help those families get together, any financial support, emergency communications, or, or getting these folks back together again. And then last but not least, we'd really, really like to thank, uh, you know, the city council, the staff, the first responders for making us all better and more prepared to deal with any emergencies that might happen in the future. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Keep with the great work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I say something?
Certainly.
Uh, I, I took the train to go to, um, the hurricane disaster relief. I had to drive down to Santa Clara, so I still got my to-go bag, and I was deployed once over to North Carolina. And just to give you a night, um, heads up, Asbury Methodist Church, they do blood drive, and on March fifteenth, they're scheduled from eleven to five o'clock. If you wanna have any extra blood, you wanna donate.
Very good. Well, thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to, uh, four point O, this is the open forum. Uh, will the city clerk please explain how people can participate?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matters jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person for, per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for the entire consent calendar. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the city council, a speaker will be allowed one comment on the items pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining consent calendar. To provide comment, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the city council chambers. Speakers will be announced in the order received. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern. The mayor will announce the conclusion of public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Uh, in that case, uh, who's our first pe, first speaker?
The first speaker is David McWigan, followed by Shirley Lewandowski, followed by Greg Scott.
Well, I finally got my response to my record request. It only took twenty-three days, including two separate extensions of the statute limit of ten days, to the conclusion that documents responsive to my request. Now, conclusion after two or three days, you might have been able to sell that was lost in the mail, but twenty-three days to find a single, one-page letter? That screams of a cover-up, Johnny. And since we're dealing with you, Johnny, there's the perverse possibility that sadly I have to consider, and it really has to do with that taking of twenty-three days to do research to request. Being a software professional, I became very good at identifying potential race conditions. I had sections of the code where error could sneak through with just a... Now, this is where that twenty-three days come in. I had asked to inspect the original letter. If the letter had been archived before my request, it would have been as simple to say immediately, they didn't have the original letter. But if it was still sitting in the file folder when my request came in, then they could have archived that letter immediately before responding to my request. Since then, they could honestly respond, they don't have the original letter anymore. Of course, they would have to make sure all the archiving is up to date, so it wouldn't be obvious of what you're trying to do. And bring in the archiving up with a date, well, that could take twenty-three days. But if that's what you try to do, or if it was just previously archived and you were purposely delaying, well, checking for a responsive document in the archive is something that needs to be looked at. This is a request to examine any digital archive of the letter I sent to wrote, I wrote to Chief Young in November twenty twenty. Sadly, these are the kinds of behaviors we have to consider when we're dealing with you, Johnny. You're a lying corrupt criminal, Johnny, and you will be found out.
The next speaker is Shirley Lewandowski, followed by Greg Scott, followed by Doug Mann.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Shirley Lewandowski. I'm a Dublin resident, and I'm here to continue to tell you that I appreciate the fact, the Livermore decision to transition to aviation gas at the Livermore Airport. So thank you for that. You may already know that last month on February twenty-fourth, a Southern California State Representative, Senator Caroline Menjivar, from District Twenty, introduced a bill, SB eleven ninety-three, to ban the sale of leaded gas in California. It is the first bill of its kind in the nation and has been gaining support. Recently, the Bay Area Quality Management Air District has stated its support of SB eleven ninety-three, and the county of Santa Clara has signed up to sponsor it together with the senator. With your decision to transition to unleaded gas, I ask the city to consider making a public statement in support of SB eleven ninety-three, with the intent, of course, to do better than the timeline outline for the total transition to unleaded gas only. Reed Airport in San Jose is scheduled to close down in two thousand thirty. This airport is one of the three airports scheduled to receive the initial supply of GAMI one hundred unleaded gas this summer. I ask the city to consider putting in a request to the county of Santa Clara that owns Reed Hillview Airport to defer the supply of GAMI one hundred to here, Livermore Airport. I'm also interested in the progress of the city's efforts to purchase and secure a second fuel tank at the airport in readiness for the one hundred percent unleaded avgas. What funds being secured to, by the tank, if a purchase contract has been initiated to bring in GAMI one hundred UL at the airport? Can the city give an update at this at the next city council meeting? The public would really appreciate it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Greg Scott, followed by Doug Mann, followed by Michelle Howard.
Good evening. I'm Greg Scott. I'm addressing a comment by Mr. Carl Winty in the last city council meeting, uh, when he made a comment about me, about being angry about homelessness. He's right. I'm very angry about homelessness. I've been homeless, and I'm angry about homelessness. Luckily, I'm no longer homeless, but I'm still angry about homelessness, the way it's being dealt with, or the lack of the way it's being dealt with. A follow-up question would be, why aren't you all angry about homelessness? Because you haven't been homeless. I doubt you've been homeless, so you'd be angry. You don't know homelessness, so you're not very angry. You are not angry because you've been comfortable. You've been comfortable for quite a while. But there's a solution to it. This is, uh, uh, section out of the, um, New York Times. It's, uh, Life Without a Home. It's from February twenty-fifth, Sunday, and there's a picture of a man in here among the homeless, um, Carl Home. He is, um, homeless in an encampment in Nashville, Tennessee. Okay? They asked Carl, I'm, uh, Clyde, it's Clyde Home, excuse me, what would you do to stop homelessness? And he said, I would take people and have them experience what it's like being homeless. Exactly. So if you wanna know homelessness, don't go to your cars after this meeting. Don't go home. Go out on the streets of Livermore and spend the night out there. Get to know homelessness. We'll ask you your mental and physical state in the morning. We'll ask you maybe if you're a little bit angry about homelessness. If that doesn't do it, maybe a few more nights out, out there. You know, I think if you tried to get a dying homeless person off the ground, you'd be angry about homelessness. I think if you were more acquainted with some of the homeless that have died in Livermore, you'd be angry about homelessness. Will, good old boy Will, Livermore ranch boy. We all let him rot out there for years, in front of the old Safeway, in front of the, what was the Orchard Supply. We let him rot. I did. You all did. We let him rot. We did nothing about it. He's dead. Problem solved. Jaime Rivera, what did we do there? Oh, the open door, the revolving door game with the Santa Rita jail. What was it about? Well, it was drug capitalism. Jaime was a, um, entrepreneur with methamphetamine and, and, uh, didn't work out from, in the long run for him. He died three years ago, I think at least. So, uh, book recommendation, uh, this book, Homeless is a Housing Problem. I don't agree with this book, but the way he go, they go about it on a data analytical basis, it's very logical. Uh, he makes it sound in the, in the prevailing mode, uh, point to this book by logic, by the data, the lame data we have, is that how homelessness is a structural problem. You're going about it like it's an individual problem. It's not. It's more a structural problem. Thank you.
The next speaker is Doug Mann, followed by Michelle Howard.
Greg might have a great idea. Maybe we should do it together. The best place for me to start tonight is to repeat what I told you on July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Regarding your city clerk's refusal to submit the move Eden housing petitions to the county, this was her Mike Pence moment, and she blew it. As we know, the vice president counted the votes and ignored fake electors. Marie Weber received the petitions but refused to do her duty and accepted the fake objection prepared by your discredited city attorney. Failing to advance the move Eden housing petitions is illegal. Making quasi-judicial evaluations is prohibited by law. The relevant case law comes from right next door in Pleasanton, from when Jennifer Ayala. This is the first major test of your new city manager, and I'll be watching what she does. She could reverse this without asking you, but she's at a disadvantage because I doubt she knew when she took the job that she would have a city attorney who chronically gives very poor legal advice and that she would need to double-check everything. This is two thousand twenty-two. Election integrity is paramount, and we know modern-day voter suppression goes on in other states. But we haven't had any reason to distrust our elections in California, let alone in Livermore. I asked the council at the time to set the earliest possible meeting date and express to your city manager that these ballots need to go to the county immediately. This is voter suppression, and you can't let that happen. In two thousand twenty-one, our country came close to despotism. Don't get us into a constitutional mess here in Livermore. So now, here we are, in two thousand twenty-four. We are in a constitutional mess, and it's far from over. Marie Weber must no longer be Livermore's election official, beginning right now. Marianna Marishiva needs to be disciplined for her unwillingness to intervene. Finally, Jason Alcala's shameful performance over the past several years cannot be allowed to continue paying its tragic dividends. It's not just his direction to subvert an election, nor his additional career of Garaventa Hill Supreme Court failure. He has proven in countless ways that he is quite inadequate for the position of city attorney. It must be terminated immediately. Through you, he works for us. We don't need his legal advice anymore. Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me. I don't allow booing. We don't allow applause. It makes, it's fair for everyone. So please, if you wanna, if you wanna show your affirmation, just please raise your hand. Thank you.
The next speaker is Michelle Howard.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Howard, and I live at, on Perry Way. Um, my backyard opens up to the, um, Arroyo, and I'm speaking of the area from Holm Street to the rodeo grounds, essentially. I'm speaking as a concerned citizen. Um, I'm a nineteen sixty graduate of Livermore High, so that tells you how old I am, and for how many years I've walked the Arroyo Trail for my exercise. I've seen definitely an increase in good traffic, meaning people, um, with strollers, walking their dogs, their kids, exploring the wonderful, uh, pathway that we have along there. Um, my concern is the, um, fat tire e-bikes, the electronic bikes, and the mini, the little motorcycles with the fat tires. I'm sure you're all aware, because it was in the Independent last week, about the concerned effort to find out what to do about the damage and erosion that is caused by these bikes. My grandson, who is now twenty-nine years old, uh, used to build tracks in the creek, but he, he pedaled. He, he, he was a BMXer. He had, he rode tiny bikes, and he used his own energy. These kids are not using their own energy. They're gunning it and causing a great deal of problem for Zone Seven, the flood control, and erosion. I did see in the Independent, uh, the current, uh, new fix with, was the, uh, signs, the new signs put up about it's illegal to ride, uh, electric vehicles or motorcycles in the creek. I'm not wording that quite right, but, um, nobody reads the signs. My daughter-in-law, it works for Wayfair, uh, back in Boston, and she is in charge of signage. She opens up new stores, and she told, she's out here visiting, and she told me, nobody reads signs. They don't. In fact, I came home from my walk yesterday with my son and my daughter-in-law from the East Coast. We had walked the whole length, four to five miles, along that Arroyo. And we walked across the Arroyo Bridge going to my house, and right there parked underneath the new sign was a guy, a father, with his big pickup truck, and he was undoing the tie-downs. He was unloading the minibike, fat tire motorcycle for his son to ride, who was about twelve years old. I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, I'm gonna close the, uh, open forum and moving on to the, uh, consent calendar. There's a few little strange things on the consent calendar this time. Uh, because I was not here for the item five point one, uh, I will be abstaining from that. And, uh, because Councilmember Kik was not, uh, here for the meeting for five point two, uh, she will also, uh, be abstaining from that vote as well. Uh, that said, is there, are there any comments that anybody wishes to, uh, make on the consent calendar? Any items wished for discussion? Okay, uh, I'll say one thing. Uh, five point eight, which was the, uh, that's the, uh, Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, what a great document. Two volumes about, uh, about hazard mitigation, and, uh, uh, one of the things that I, I rather liked was on page three hundred and thirty, uh, they actually define, uh, mobs, uh, that there are aggressive mobs, escape mobs, uh, acquisitive mobs, uh, expressive mobs, and flash mobs. Uh,
So all of these things characterized, then they go into different types of riots. But really, a very, very comprehensive document. And also, I noticed that on the table of acronyms, they didn't list one of my favorites, and that was actually from the 1991 firestorms in Oakland. We actually took over 30 different agencies and we formed EBRICS, the East Bay Regional Communication System. It's an interoperable communication system, a real core to emergency response in the entire region, and they missed that one. But again, I think that it's a very comprehensive document. Certainly appreciate the tremendous amount of work that went into that. And I just wanted to recognize the staff that put all of that together. So with that, I would be willing to entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. Is there public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Greg Scott.
I was on a roll there, sorry.
Greg Scott on 5.7. First of all, I want to be thankful to Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, Marsha Fudge, for her service. She's retiring March 22nd from the Biden administration. She has given, I'm sure she's frustrated, but she's given a heck of an effort in the area of affordable housing and homelessness and all, and I'm sure it's a lot of great frustration. She really should have been Secretary of Agriculture, but as Biden, as the Biden administration goes for power, which they did in that case, she didn't get that position, but she's going home to Ohio, Northern Ohio, Cuyahoga County, where she was in Congress and to spend time with her 93-year-old mother. So I thank her for her service. Also on emergency response here, severe storm. We were on Arroyo Mochio and talking about that. I have an association you probably wouldn't understand with the Arroyo Mochio, but seeing the rains in there and seeing the damage in 2017 in the rains, and you spent $650,000 or so. I watched the concrete just ripped up, and it was amazing. But I'd been in that creek enough to know exactly what the behavior of the water was going to be. The point being that I don't think we're paying attention to what we're up against. And we can go into label it fear mongering or whatever. We can go into polarizations on certain things, but you know, certain things have happened even before human changes to the atmosphere as a cycle, such as atmospheric river fives. And it's such a tremendous amount of water, and it cycles about every 200 years, and we had one here December 1861 through January of 1862. It probably rained in the nature of, in the area, about eight feet of water here. It rained about 10 feet in most of Northern California. It actually rained that year, that period, five feet in Los Angeles. So if you're thinking of what the late atmospheric rivers were with 14 inches in some areas, imagine five feet of rain in Los Angeles. So we're against certain things, and there's a good point is that these are accelerating from the primary slowdown of the number one component over the Pacific is the the Pacific Walker circulation. So it's slowing, so the effects could get even much more pronounced. We have to be more prepared. It's going to take a lot of resources to be that. And it's one of the reasons why, you know, expanding the infrastructure when we're in an inadequacy of dealing with the current infrastructure makes very little sense to me. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comment period for the consent calendar. Do I would be willing to entertain a motion for consent? Yes. Well, what we'll do is we can vote on the you know, probably, I was gonna say, it'd probably be easiest to do 5.1, then 5.2, and then the balance. Okay. Yeah. Okay, so do I have a motion on 5.1?
I'll move 5.1.
Moved by Councilmember Branding, seconded by Councilmember Baryantos. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? A mayor abstains. That passes 4 to 1. Pardon me?
I was just gonna rush right into it.
Okay. Motion made for 5.2 by Councilmember Branding, seconded by Councilmember Baryantos. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed? One abstention, Councilmember Kik. That passes 4 to 1. And then finally, 5.3 to the rest of the consent calendar.
All right, we'll move 5.3 to 5.9.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? It passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to public hearing, 6.1. This is considering a resolution approving the first substantial amendment to the City of Livermore's U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Honorable Mayor Marshall and members of the City Council, this is your city manager, Mariana Marishiva. Item 6.1 is going to be presented by Amy Walker, Management Analyst in the Community Development Department, Housing and Human Services Division, and she is ready. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Public. My name is Amy Walker, and I am the Human Services Management Analyst for the Housing and Human Services Division. The item before you tonight is a public hearing for the first substantial amendment to the City of Livermore's HUD approved Fiscal Year 2023-24 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program, also known as CDBG. HUD requires all state, county, and local governments receiving CDBG funds to complete an annual action plan that identifies federal, state, and local funding resources that the city will utilize to meet the priorities established in its five-year consolidated plan. As an entitlement city, the City of Livermore is required to prepare the annual action plan and also a citizen participation plan. The participation plan describes policies, procedures, and public involvement for the grant process. The plan also describes criteria that would require a substantial amendment to the action plan. A substantial amendment is required when an activity's scope, purpose, location, or beneficiaries are substantially changed. So in order to meet the annual expenditure requirements set forth by HUD, staff is requesting a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2324 action plan that was approved by council on April 24, 2023. The first substantial change to the annual action plan is to reduce funding to Tri Valley Haven's emergency shelter rebuild project by $200,000. The action plan was approved for $483,846 of funding for the project. It was to be used on demolition for the existing buildings on the property, as well as relocation costs for the residents. Since the approval of the action plan, other funding has been given to Tri Valley Haven for the relocation cost of their residents. And then also the timelines for the project have been extended a little bit as well. So staff is now requesting to reduce a portion of their funds to fund another activity that will help us meet our spending guidelines for the year. The reduction of funding will not impact Tri Valley Haven's ability to proceed with the demolition of their project, which is expected to happen in June of 2024. Staff is also coordinating with HUD to pursue a Section 108 loan for the project, which would bring in additional funding to support the construction of the project, as well as help Tri Valley Haven address their financing gaps that they still have. We plan to bring the Section 108 loan back to council at a later date for approval. The second substantial change to the action plan is to allocate an additional $276,000 of funds to the repayment of a Section 108 loan that we use to acquire Hagaman Farms here in Livermore. $200,000 of the funds are being reallocated from Tri Valley Haven, and $76,000 would be from prior year unallocated funding that we have. The action plan already includes funding for the principal and interest payments on Hagaman Farms. And staff is now recommending just an additional payment on the loan. $270,000 will go towards principal and $6,000 towards interest. And the principal loan repayment will reduce the terms of the loan by four years and will result in the savings of almost $23,000 over the life of the loan. The repayment will also result in an increased borrowing capacity for a new Section 108 loan. So in summary, staff is recommending that City Council adopt a resolution to approve the first substantial amendment to the 2324 Annual Action Plan. Authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute related documents, agreements, and modifications with HUD and Tri Valley Haven. Approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $76,000 from the Community Development Block Grant Fund. And authorize the city manager or her designee to take whatever actions are necessary and appropriate to carry out the purpose and intent of this resolution, including approving minor changes to the first substantial amendment to the action plan. That concludes my presentations. Are there any questions?
There we go. Thank you. Questions? Okay, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir. Greg Scott, first speaker.
The state is looking to be $73 billion in debt. On top of a cumulative debt of $145 billion. Last I checked, California doesn't print its own currency, so I can't just print money to get out of debt. We have to be very cautious how we're spending resources. For example, on Vineyard 2.0. It's great. You have 25 permanent spaces for permanent housing spaces. That's wonderful. You have 20 temporary housing spaces. That's great, too. In a community shelter, hopefully you fill that. So 45 spaces between temporary and permanent housing, 45. You built the place for $20 million. That's $404,000 a slot. Well, the homeless count in California is 181,000. We spent $4 billion in a year. That's $22,000 each, somewhere around $22,000. So you spent 18 times what we're spending on the average homeless person for each bed slot at Vineyard 2.0, assuming you fill that shelter on a period basis. You fill it full every night, amortizing it to full capacity. So I'm really concerned how we're spending resources, and we're acting like it's endless. I think in this case, it's necessary to spend this kind of money. But, you know, we look at it, oh, capital costs are just so sexy. And then the operating costs come up, like on Vineyard 2.0, and funding comes forward here of $439,000. Where does 90% of it go? It goes to Vineyard 2.0. In some ways, you've created a monster of resources and financial resources. You're not going to be able to keep spending resources like this. I think in this case, it's necessary, but overall, to keep thinking that we can just throw endless amounts of resources at this, it's not going to work. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. That would have closed the public comment period. Bring it back to the council. Questions or comments? Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, thanks. That's okay. Thanks for the report. I think it's a good idea. Saving money is always a good thing. But what happens with Tri Valley Haven? I mean, are they they're not left in the lurch, I assume. Can you help us understand how that's going to work?
Yeah, so basically, they didn't end up needing the money this fiscal year because they got another funding source for their relocation costs. And so then we will come back with the grant recommendations. There was additional funding that was asked for by them. It's just pushed off until next year.
I think that's fine, and it just wasn't very clear to me that that they had another way to meet their needs.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Councilmember Branding?
Thank you. Yeah, so that was one thing I just wanted to make sure was clarified. The other thing, just I really wanted to give a big thank you to your entire team. I know how it's difficult to move CDGP money around, and sometimes it does get left in accounts where it rolls over from year to year, and I think this is great that we're actually finding use for it immediately and quickly, and your reaction time with this is pretty impressive, honestly, with the pace that the federal government typically goes at. So I just wanted to give some appreciation for the work that was put into this.
Anybody else?
I have another question.
Oh, certainly.
Yeah, thanks. I wanted to address Mr. Scott's concerns. I mean, Vineyard 2.0 is not being run by the City of Livermore. Is that right, isn't it? And it's either Open Heart Kitchen or the Housing
Housing Consortium.
Housing Consortium of East Bay. Is that true?
Correct.
And they're responsible for obtaining the money to run those two parts of the project?
Right, they're responsible for operations and for funding.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make it clear to people that the operation of Vineyard 2.0, 2.0 as we call it, is not the responsibility of the residents and taxpayers in this community. True?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baryantos?
Yeah, I wish we could solve the problem, but I don't think we ever will solve the problem. Somebody can be homeless for whatever reason. I think if we dust it off, Ronald Reagan and Kevin come back and not close on Emory or Agnew. But I think, well, 20% of the people out there have an addiction or mental illness, and that would take care of some of the people who they had a way for the state to put them back and help them. So I think Vineyard 2.0, I went through it. I liked it. I wish it was way bigger and more people could be in it, because I saw one lady, we toured it, sitting in the back lot, wishing that she can have one of the slots. So, you know, if you can help somebody, it's great. You know, we're not going to help everybody. I taught. I couldn't get every kid to get a straight A. I never got one. And there's some people, no matter how hard you try, you're not going to be able to save them. And we're not a dictatorship. We're not going to gather them all up and put them in a barn somewhere and say, here, we're going to take care of you this way. But I think whatever we can do, Vineyard 2.0, tiny houses, they all help somebody. And just get somebody off the streets. And someone said, well, it's only one person. So what? It was one person, great. If it's your mom or your dad or an aunt or an uncle, great. Because, you know, we don't have, we're not the society that kind of we had people that, you know, were homeless and they had family in the city, and the family couldn't handle them. And it's that situation. We can never fix it. Yeah, you know, we're not God, and God has a reason. So anyway, I appreciate what's going on. We're trying.
Again, I'm very proud of the work that we're doing throughout the community with Goodness Village, Vineyard 2.0, Tri Valley Haven, all of those, Shepherd's Gate, Sojourner House, all of those different things. As I've said many times, there are five shelters for the disadvantaged, the homeless, and the abused in the five cities of the Tri Valley. All of them are in Livermore, and that speaks to this community and the fact that this community steps up, whereas there are a lot of other communities that don't. And I'm very proud of the work that we do. Just as a matter of scale, combined, how much money on a yearly basis, like last year, how much do we get altogether in CDBG funds? Four
On average, $400.
$400,000. That's what we get, and that's what we try to leverage to provide the human services in this community. That's what we get. That's our budget, and we try to leverage throughout the community and with all of our partners. And I think we're doing a tremendous amount of work, and I'm very proud of Vineyard 2.0 and what this community does to help those that are disadvantaged. So thank you for the great work that you're doing. With that, are there any further comments? Nope. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period. And Councilmember Branning?
Looking for another motion?
Okay.
Sure. I will move staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Branning, seconded by Councilmember Kik. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to matters for consideration, there are none. County committee reports, council member reports, anything you want to add anything to that?
Nothing to add today. It's been a busy couple of weeks and a lot of interesting things. I will say, just as a brief announcement, LAFDA is updating their schedules. So if you are a frequent user of the bus services for Wheels Bus, make sure you check. I do not remember off the top of my head the date that goes into effect. Perhaps staff can chime in if they know. Okay, it's very soon. It is, I believe, this week or next. So I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of that.
Okay, Councilmember Kik?
Just reporting that I was at the LAFDA meeting last Monday.
All right, Councilmember Barrientos, any other comments outside of your report?
I like... Branning and I went through an interview of 20 applicants for some advisory committees, and I really enjoyed meeting the people that we interviewed, and they had... You know, I always wish I can develop another committee to have all of them involved. And they all want to help the city. They all want to get involved, whether it's art or beautification. And I enjoyed talking to a lot of people, and because I liked it. And Branning and I, I think we went through real quick, and I think we enjoyed talking to the people.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to build on what the mayor was saying regarding the services that this community provides to those that are less fortunate than many of us. My wife and I attended a fundraiser last night for Aruka House, which is a home for men coming out of prison. And they house six or eight people. And some of the city staff were actually there as well. And I think it's just another indication of the care and the concern that this community has for those that are less fortunate. And you hear the testimony from some of the people that are at Aruka House, and it is heartwarming to know that people are reaching out to these people as they're leaving prison and trying to get back on their feet. You can imagine how hard that might be for somebody that's been in prison. One of the gentlemen that was speaking last night had been in prison for 24 years. So imagine what that's like, coming back into society with no place to go, maybe no family to reach out and help you. And the world has changed in the last 24 years for that gentleman. So it's a... And they're all, by the way, they're also, which was sort of new, I think, they're also taking in some formerly homeless as well. So it's men that are needing a place to live, either coming out of prisons or homelessness. I also wanted to respond to one of the earlier comments about our city clerk, city attorney, and city manager. That's certainly one person's opinion, but it's not the opinion of me, and I would suggest it's not the opinion of the people that are sitting up here. We deal with these people on a daily basis and see the expertise, the professionalism, and the care they have for this community. And we're all doing the best we can. And to demean them the way that he did earlier and did back in January 2022, I think is reprehensible.
Are you allowed to talk?
So, no. I just want you to know, and the public to know, that I personally support Marie, Jason, and Mariana. And if and when we ever have an issue, that's a responsibility of your city council to deal with it. And we don't respond to those comments like we heard this evening from that gentleman earlier. I do want to ask two questions, though, that were brought up by some of the people during open forum. Is it possible to get an update about the airport at the next meeting? I know we get a lot of comments. We got a lot more written comments that were in our packet. So maybe it would be time to sort of bring everybody up to speed on the airport and fueling.
Vice Mayor Carling, this is your city manager, Mariana Marashova, through the mayor. City staff continuously provides updates on the airport through the website, multiple webpages, as well as weekly newsletter. But we can certainly discuss internally if it's appropriate to place an item on the city council agenda to provide additional updates. But I wanted to assure the city council and the community that we do stay up to date and provide updates on airport development, transition to unleaded fuel, as I mentioned, online through e-newsletter that goes out to everyone who subscribes, as well as social media.
I mean, if we were at a... If GAMMY 100 was available, it's a drop-in fuel, right?
Yes.
So it could be mixed with the fuel we have now. So there's no need to buy another tank.
No, Vice Mayor Carling. And again, without going into too much detail, you made a call, and the speakers mentioned this for us, and it's also on our webpage. Staff have been working diligently with our fixed base operator to recertify an available tank that exists at the airport. It's a smaller tank.
Right.
And we're very, very close. Earlier this week, actually last week, we heard back from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District that they will recertify the smaller tank. And the idea was to start providing fuel in that smaller quantity to see how high the demand is. And if the demand is high, we will take steps to provide an additional tank. But we need to first find out how high the demand will be here at the airport. And so we're taking steps toward that. And again, updating our community continuously on the website, through social media, through e-newsletter, and we can do more of that as well.
Sure, I appreciate that, and I know that it's there. Not everybody gets their information off the website and other written means. So I just, if there's an opportunity to think about it, if you think it would be worthwhile... I mean, you sort of brought us up to speed right now, anyway, so I appreciate that. Except the people that brought this to our attention are not here. And so it's disappointing that they didn't stick around to hear that. The other thing that Michelle Howard brought up was about the e-bikes in the Arroyo. I know, I read something about that. Can you bring us up to speed on that quickly?
Absolutely. Vice Mayor Carling, again through the mayor. And I will, before I respond to your specific question, I will state, I think for the community, that the city council receives on a weekly basis very detailed updates from city staff, and those updates are public. They are on the website. They could be accessed by anyone in our community, and they not only provide updates on the airport, but code enforcement and many other issues. With regards to the e-bike use, as the speakers themselves pointed out, it is a complicated issue because the city is not the owner or the operator of those trails. They're owned and operated depending on the trail by either the Livermore Area Recreation and Park District or Zone 7. Our city engineering staff, as well as public safety, have been in touch with LARPD, Zone 7, and the residents themselves. They walk the trails. And the conclusion was that there isn't any significant damage right now, but still signs were deemed to be prudent. And as the speakers pointed out themselves, signs have been posted by Zone 7. And our law enforcement is there on a regular basis observing. So we're taking steps between signs and observations and communication with the residents, young residents that enjoy our parks about being respectful to the environment as well as to each other.
Great. Thank you very much. That's it for me.
I just want to have a follow-up question on that. So I know that I've seen the signs. When we're saying you may not operate an electric vehicle, if you turn your electric part off, people still may pedal on those trails, correct? Just because the tires are fat, that's not the issue. I see a nod in the back. I just know many people with preteens who bike those bikes back and forth to school, and parents would prefer that their children are on trails as often as possible, but letting them know to turn off, it is generally a module. I ride one all the time. I do turn it off when I'm on the trail. But it's not the size of the tire that's the issue. It's using the high speed, correct? Yes, okay.
Well, we got the expert.
I am calling the lifeline on this one.
That's right, as far as the pedaling. If they pedal them, they're okay. And we've been aware of the situation. We are doing extra patrols as we have time. And then we also encourage the public to call if they see violations happening, so we can go out and address it. But as stated, most of it is juveniles out there, and so we'd like to take an educational approach prior to a hardcore enforcement approach. But we are monitoring it closely, and we're available to respond if we get those calls.
Mayor?
Councilmember Branning?
Just following up on all that, is it possible in our next weekly update that you include the current ordinance or whatever the rules are, so we can review them?
Yeah, we can certainly provide links to the current ordinances in place that are applicable in your weekly updates.
Perfect, thank you.
I got it.
Okay, Councilmember Barrientos?
Yeah, one lady wanted me to walk out there, and I walked out in the wrong park. But her concern is not the noises, more so, she said these kids have ramps. She's seen them going like 10, 15 feet in the air, and she's concerned that, you know, that they're going to kill themselves. You know, boys do it. Boys do. Anyway, I told her, we are looking at it, and I'm not sure we want to come in there and arrest all these kids. You know, tell them. Because she went out there and talked to them. She knew it. She had like 10 boys around her, you know, wondering what she was doing. And she goes, no, I'm concerned about your health. Because they're making jumps where they go flying pretty good. I guess they're trying to reenact you, but you got to remember what happened to him. Anyway, yes, I'm glad you're looking at it, and I can tell her I have to go check it out myself again. But is that really our property out there, or the city? Yes, so is it?
Zone 7.
Councilmember Barrientos, this is again your city manager, Mariana Marashova. As I mentioned earlier, the property in question is managed by either Zone 7, owned and managed by either Zone 7 or Livermore Area Recreation and Park District. Our law enforcement is there, time permitting, because honestly, everything comes down to priorities and resources. We want our police officers to respond to crimes. And if they're in the park all the time, by definition, they're not able to respond to 911 calls. But time permitting, they're out there and talking to the residents, talking to the children, educating them.
We have worked with the property owners to remove larger jumps if they're there, or ramps that we've seen. And we also did a social media post earlier in the week as an educational piece to get ahead of it, to let parents know that there was some risk in doing that, and it was illegal depending on how they're riding. So we hope that that will help reduce the number of complaints, but we will keep an eye on it.
Well, I know our city manager rides a bike. Do you take that trail and the ramps?
Councilmember Barrientos, I have two teenage children. I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay, this is my turn. Just stepping back a little bit, the comments about the airport and the recertifying the fuel tank. It's my understanding that doesn't the Bay Area Air Quality Management District have a required public comment period of like 60 days? So once they implement the public comment period, we can't move faster than that. So we're also constrained by their rules.
Mayor Marshon, thank you for asking the question. That was our understanding from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District a couple of weeks ago. We received another update from them last week that, as I mentioned, suggested that the tank will be recertified. That same email also said that detailed instructions will be coming our way, and to watch for that email, we're still looking for it. So I do anticipate, based on previous communication, that there will be a 60-day public comment period that is required by the agency. But we will keep you and your colleagues, as well as members of the community, updated on all the platforms that I previously mentioned.
So that's something that is outside the city's control. It's just like the GAMMY fuel. The GAMMY fuel is not currently available. We can't get it. We can certainly try, and I think that we indicated our commitment to transitioning. The other thing that's important is recognizing that any sort of ban, in order to be effective, has to be regional. Because as they've seen down in Reed Hillview, there's been a lot of trumpeting about Reed Hillview banning gasoline, but or banning the leaded fuel. They just fly to the nearby airports, including Livermore. And actually, that increases the number of operations because they have to take off to fly to get the leaded fuel and then come back. So it's actually increasing the number of operations by reason of the fact that they don't have leaded fuel in Reed Hillview. So it's got to be a regional ban if it's going to be effective, and we've already committed to acquiring the unleaded fuel as soon as we can make it available.
To complicate matters, a ban also would be against FAA regulations.
Sure.
So it's very complicated, as you mentioned.
And the other thing is that I suggested to the Bay Area Quality Management District, before a plane can use unleaded fuel, it has to be certified. Both the engine and the frame have to be certified, and that can run up to $1,000 to get the certification. I had suggested to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District that they provide a grant to incentivize pilots, incentivize pilots so that they could use the unleaded fuel. Never heard back, but this is something that you cannot burn unleaded fuel if your plane needs it. They burn holes in the cylinder heads, and they fall from the sky. So it's not easy, and that's why this GAMMY is really remarkable. It's a drop-in replacement, but it's not available. So we're working as quickly as we can, but working with the constraints of some of the other agencies. Okay, with that, I had an Alameda County Transportation Commission meeting this morning, the Planning Policy Legislative Committee. And we had the 2023 Performance Report on some of our programs and how they're working. Really interesting data that came out of that. No surprise, the number one cause of accidents is unsafe speed. So there's certainly a component of personal responsibility there. The other thing is what we call a high injury network. 65% of pedestrian and 59% of bike collisions take place on 4% of the roads. 4%. So we can certainly target those roads for the engineering solutions that we possibly can. This is some of the stuff that we're doing on East Avenue right now, is how do you engineer some of these controls? This was another remarkable one. At 35 miles an hour, the risk of a fatal collision is 28%. At 40 miles an hour, the risk rises to 68%. So a five mile an hour difference, and you almost triple your risk, well over double. So things to be aware of. So with that, I've got nothing else. There being no further items coming before the city, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.